Good evening.
Good evening.
Prior to tonight's regularly scheduled board meeting, we will conduct a hearing for the purpose of receiving public input on the proposed closing of Marion Boyd Elementary School, Northside Elementary School, and Vaughn Elementary School at the conclusion of the 2025-2026 school year. This hearing represents the final opportunity for interested citizens to provide input concerning the potential closing. Informational meetings were held on January 11th, January 18th, and January 25th where information was shared by Warren County Schools staff on the condition of the affected facilities, along with the cost of providing additional school facilities in the event of such closing. During each of these meetings, interested citizens were given an opportunity to provide input and pose questions concerning the potential closing. Later this evening, during the action portion of our agenda, the Board will determine whether to close the schools as recommended. Board Policy 2310, public participation in board meetings will govern this hearing. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments, however, the public hearing session will not exceed 30 minutes total, except by majority vote of the Board. A sign-up sheet was made available 30 minutes before the meeting for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the Board on this topic only. During the public hearing session, the Board Chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they've signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the Board with the additional information in written form. If an unusually large number of people request to speak, a majority of the Board may decide to reduce the time for each individual, or to require the designation of a spokesperson for each group of persons supporting or opposing the same positions. At any time, the Board may establish additional procedures to ensure that this public hearing session proceeds in an efficient and orderly manner. At the conclusion of the hearing, we will begin tonight's regularly scheduled board So on our sign-up sheet for our public hearing, we have Ms. Jeriann King-Johnson.
I would like to ask the Board if I can have an additional 30 minutes since I'm the 30 seconds, since I'm the only speaker.
Take your time, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Board members, Mr. Sutton. That way I don't have to read so fast. First, I am urging the Warren County School Board to reconsider its recommendations to consolidate Warren County's three elementary schools until further investigation is done on the impact of school consolidation, so delaying the decision. This plan to consolidate rural elementary schools in Warren County is built on a series of what I call missteps. The decision was made with no community input and made in isolation of a bigger vision, without a bigger vision of Warren County, its children, and its families. Here's what I've heard as rationale for consolidation. Consolidation trends in rural communities and peer counties, free money, outdated school buildings and operating systems, the efficiency of having all the schools on one campus, the declining young student population, and the promise of young children having access to more instructional choices in a new building. Second, let me be clear, I am not necessarily against consolidation. I am against centering money in the deliberation rather than the welfare of our community and children. The state of North Carolina is dangling a mighty big carrot before us. It is not a one or two million dollar carrot, but a $30 million one. The carrot is so big that we can't see around it, behind it, at the top or bottom of it. What I mean by this is that we have not utilized research and pushed the carrot aside to investigate the impacts on student learning outcomes and community impacts in peer rural communities where elementary schools have already been consolidated. Do we know that consolidation of elementary schools led to improved outcomes for students? If so, we need to share that information with parents and the community. That will be helpful and help to build some collective understanding. The outdated and old school buildings argument does not offer much leverage in a community that prides itself on historic preservation. The restoration of John Graham, the old White High School built in 1921, now houses the County Department of Social Services. That building is located on the site of the 18th century Warren Mail Academy. Warrenton's award-winning town hall, built in the late 18th, well, early 1900s, was recently renovated. There's a long list of projects. I do, however, understand that the student population is declining and that it seems not feasible to have three schools with a small student body. What if we consolidated two schools? As a community, we don't know for sure how any of this might look, especially with the expansion of opportunity scholarships and charter schools. There are so many unknowns that the big carrot keeps us from exploring. I suggest that this school administration and Board provide parents and community members with a comprehensive report highlighting how peer communities have found success and increased student academic, social, and civic outcomes, and realistic projections about how the old school buildings might be utilized. I cannot imagine an industry housed in Marion Boyd School in historic Warrenton. We need more than these kind of responses to this very complex situation, and it's an opportunity. The state of North Carolina has a surplus of money. We need to demand what we need to provide our children and community with equitable schools and exceptional education. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. That ends the public hearing portion of this meeting, and we will begin our regularly scheduled Work Session Business Meeting. So this evening, Board Member Ebony Tally-Brim is virtual, as well as our attorney, Ms. Mara O'Keefe, and I would like to establish that we have a quorum and call the February 27th, 2024 Work Session Business Meeting to order. If you so choose, may we honor a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to start with a safety and security announcement. As those of you here in person tonight noticed, we have implemented some additional safety and security measures for Board of Education meetings. We will continue with these safety precautions moving forward. So if you plan to attend a board meeting, please allow yourself enough time to go through security as you enter the building. These additional precautions are to ensure the safety of our Board members, members of the public, Warren County Schools staff, and of course, any students on campus, whether they're here for the board meeting or still at school for an extracurricular activity. We will also enforce our Board policy as it relates to public hearings, public comments, and following the rules of order during our board meetings. We appreciate your cooperation with our safety and security protocols, as well as our meeting rules of order. Does the Board have any further announcements? Hearing none. Mr. Sutton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few announcements and comments. One, I want to thank our staff, for many of us just finished attending a Beginning Teacher and First Year International Teacher Support Event. This was a great opportunity to really show our international teachers, as well as our teachers that are in their first, second, or third year of teaching, one, how much we value and appreciate them and their work. I shared with the group that oftentimes when you're establishing a new relationship, it's important to remind folks that we value them and how much we appreciate them. And so this was an effort to show our appreciation for them, but to also share with them a message that we're all in this together. And so part of this was a unity effort in bringing together the unity of hearts and minds as we engage in this work, and that regardless of how difficult it gets sometimes, we're all in this together. And so I want to thank our staff and the entire HR department, CTE department, and others that were involved in putting it together, this first Beginning Teacher and International Support Event. Our one county middle school, Lady Warriors, are basketball champs. Their team went undefeated this year, and they finished the season 14-0. So let's, yes, give them a hand. Their perfect season made our Lady Warriors the regular season champs, and they even won the conference championship. So congratulations to these student athletes, coaches, and supporters. Go Warriors! Also, our men's varsity basketball team is in the state playoffs tonight. Our team is playing in the first round of the state playoffs this evening. Right now, as we speak, they're at Wilkson Prep. Tipoff is at 6:00, so that game should have just started. Our Eagles are challenged with taking on the number one team in the state in Wilkson Prep. So we know it'll be a tough game, but regardless of what happens on the hardwood tonight, we're proud of our Eagles, and again, our student athletes, coaches, and all their supporters. So go Eagles, and please wish them well tonight. Eighth graders, apply now for Warren County Early College High School. Any eighth graders who are interested in attending Warren Early College High School have until March 13th to submit their application. You can find the application materials and information on the Warren Early College High School website in the News section. If you have any questions or want to tour the school, please contact our Principal of the Early College, Renee Judkins, and again, applications are due no later than March Also this year, this month, or this week, in celebration of Black History Month, our school system was well-represented last week at the Governor's Mansion, as Governor Roy Cooper honored Black educators in celebration of Black History Month. Our chief academic officer and the 2020 North Carolina West Fargo Principal of the Year, Dr. Keisha Clemmons, was there and was honored for her contributions to education. She was joined by Director of Elementary Education Title I Director Stephanie Brooks, and they were proud to represent all the amazing educators and support staff in Warren County Schools. Also, I want to recognize for Black History Month celebrations, the fact that Marion Boyd Elementary is having their Black History education program tonight. It's important for us to ensure that all of our students learn more about national, state, and local Black history, and so let's celebrate and join Marion Boyd as they celebrate Black educators, schools, and students, and just having a perfect way to round out Black We were also represented at the North Carolina State University last week for the College of Education Job Fair. Our Human Resources Department and CTE Director Derek Fox set up a booth and spoke with future teachers about why they should come to work here in Warren County Schools. We know that we have a lot to offer here in Warren County, so we appreciate their efforts to attract high-quality candidates to our district. Last but not least, bus driver training is available. We're always looking to hire more bus drivers, and in fact, we're willing to pay current employees to get their CDL license to drive their school bus as an extra duty assignment. You can make an extra $1,200 a month, or $12,000 for the school year. We offer flexible schedules where you can work mornings, afternoons, both, or you can just work certain days of the week. A typical bus route normally takes about two hours. Our next school bus driver class is March 12th, 13th, and 14th during the school day with a test on Friday morning, March 15th. The class is offered right here in Warren County, and if interested, please contact our Transportation Director, Mr. R.C. Creets, as soon as possible if you're interested in taking this class. And last but not least, our radio show, Learn More with Warren County Schools, will be live on WARR 1520 AM and 105.3 FM Thursday from noon until 12:30. This week, we're focusing on our Career and Technical Education Department. As we mentioned in our last meeting, February is CTE Month, and we hope that you can listen on the radio, stream it online from the radio station's website, or watch us live on the Warren County Schools Facebook page. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So you're going to amend it?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we amend tonight's agenda.
To do?
To...
Eliminate?
Eliminate 5.0, the public hearing.
Okay, so I have a motion by Vice Chair Sims, and a second by Board Member Tally-Brim, that we approve the amended...
I think we amended it. We have just amended it.
Oh, yeah. That we amend the agenda to remove 5.0 public hearing.
Just to provide some clarity, since the public hearing was held prior to the meeting, we're removing the public hearing from the agenda since that's already been conducted.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? Aye, as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that said then, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
So again, I have a motion by Co-Chair, Board Member Sims, a second by Board Member Ebony Tally-Brim.
Long.
Oh, that was her, I'm sorry. By Ms. Long, Board Member Long, that we approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, that motion carries. So now with public comment, we have Ms. Barbara Espinosa. Good evening. Good evening.
I just want to let you know, someone said if you speak, you could get fired. So I am speaking as a concerned citizen only, just to put that on the record. Okay, now you can go.
Put your mic up a little bit.
I'm just speaking about a concern.
Sam, you're tall, put the mic up just a little bit.
Okay, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen, and I was raised during the civil rights era. As you can see, I'm African-American, and I'm also a member of this community, and I was really ashamed at what I saw at the last board meeting. And we fought really hard for civil rights. We fought to be heard, especially through the vote, and we also for protections of due process. And both of these, I feel, weren't done at the last board meeting, it fell short. An African-American young lady came who was extremely proud of her heritage and of her race, and she tried to share her knowledge and celebrate Black History. It is Black History Month, and only to be cut down and chased away. And this is exactly what it looked like when I watched it. And so I am ashamed for three reasons. One, to see a young Black person not given the right to share her heritage. And also, was there a reason that others that were with her were not allowed to complete their presentation? I'm also ashamed, number two, that this Board was elected by this community, and their duty per NCSBN is to maintain awareness of community values, concerns, and interests. And in this case, it was Black History, and it was an opportunity to celebrate our heritage. It was an opportunity to share our pride and to talk about our history before slavery, and it was cut short. The last reason, and this is the one that really hurt me the most, was that as I look at this Board and what it's composed of, there are people here of color, and not one of the Board members stood up, not one person advocated for this young lady or allowed the rest of her presenters to the opportunity to complete their presentation. We're talking about consolidating a school. Well, what is a good school, much less a new consolidated school? When we teach our children there to strive for excellence and to be proud of who they are and what they can become, and then they see this, and this is in word only. So I ask you all to think about it. You want us to be proud, you want the children to be proud, give them the opportunity to express themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And even if you were speaking as an employee, you wouldn't have to be worried about being fired.
Okay, that ends our public comment period. All right, I forgot to read the... I forgot to read the thing, but that's all right, I'll read it next time. I forgot to read the part about public comment. Okay. All right, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce to Tony McNeil, you all have met her before. She's our Director of School Performance, and she is bringing to you our applications for restart, reauthorization, and continuation. So, Ms. McNeil?
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chairperson, Superintendent Sutton, and Board. So, we are at a crossroads right now in Warren County where we have exhausted... where we have exhausted our five-year with two years of extension for restart. So where we sit right now is that we're in the period where we have to either reapply, exit, or, I mean, those are the only two things we really can do. So, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, is that better? Yes, I got you. So restart is our reform model that we're using in North Carolina. There are four actually, there are four models, but restart is the only one that we're currently using. It is from this general statute that states that you, the state board has given you, the local board, authorization to operate our schools who are recurring low performing under exemptions from, sort of like charter. So that, those exemptions are meant to provide a means for us to improve our school and district performance. Right now, we have four schools who are restart schools. We're considered a restart district, and I'll give you the information on each of those schools. One of the things I do want to share with you is our flexibility categories, our budget, employment requirements, and that's where we can hire teachers who are not fully certified in the area, but they have the content knowledge. So for instance, if we had a biology major, we could hire that person to teach biology without that certification. However, the district would support them to gain that certification. Calendar, and you know, we've done that before. Before I came to the district where we had a flexible calendar, our standard course of study, which is a flexibility we do not take advantage of, assessment, we don't take advantage of, and there are some ways that we take advantage of class size. An example I can give you of that right now is that Marion Boyd, they're using their flexibility with budget to try to hire another kindergarten teacher to speak to the number, the class size, the number of students who are in that class, trying to keep it under 27, and right now, they're sitting right there. So, with that said, where we are for Warren County Schools, we were a part of the original Cohort One in 1718. And so that, the reform cycle is five years. The SBE gave us an additional two years because of COVID. So basically, they said, you had your five years, but we're in the midst of it, let's give you a little more time. And so, right now, we're at the end of our authorization cycle. By reapplying for restart, Warren County Schools acknowledges that we will give another five-year commitment to supporting schools with their charter-like flexibilities, how they implement those, how we recruit, how we retain teachers, et cetera. Guiding backwards planning for flexibility use and robust school improvement planning, that's really big for us right now, especially with Dr. Clemmons coming on board, working with schools for their school improvement plans. And supporting accurate reporting that contributes to academic gain and continued restart authorization. So throughout the five-year process, they ask us for things that show that we are doing what we said we were going to do. Mostly, our school improvement team, our school improvement plans, I'm sorry, are how we reflect our work.
Ms. McNeil, who school is the SBE?
This, I'm sorry, the State Board of Education.
That's good, the mic right there.
The State Board right there, okay. Yes, State Board of Education is the SBE. So, our first school, who is one of our restart schools, is Marion Boyd Elementary. Right now, for Marion Boyd, you see, in 2223, their school performance score was F. Their school performance score was 29. Their growth status was not met. Are they eligible to exit restart? They are not. But they are eligible to reapply for authorization. And so before you, you should have a copy of their application. This is also in regards to Marion Boyd. This is just the workflow for restart. Basically, it says where you enter, how you go to growth status. And if you see from Marion Boyd, their growth status does not meet. Their achievement score, it declines below zero. And so right now, where they sit is with no further place to go except to reapply for restart. That's another five years of flexibility. Same with Northside Elementary. Their performance grade is an F, their score is a 35. Their growth status is not met. Are they eligible to exit restart? They are not. Are we applying for reauthorization? We are. Again, just another five years of those flexibilities. Their workflow looks just like Marion Boyd. They're recurring low performing. That means that two out of three years, they were, did not meet. They were low performing. Their growth status did not meet. Their achievement score was below zero. And so right now, where we are at the end of this cycle is to reapply and see if the state board will again allow us to have those flexibilities to operate in order to improve our schools. Here's Warren County High School, performance grade a D, school performance grade a 46, growth status not met. Are they eligible to exit? They are not. Are they eligible to reapply? They are, and we are reapplying for them. One of the biggest pushes for Warren County High School, of course, is our graduation rate. And I think Dr. Simmons has some things she's cooking up to try to speak to the graduation rate. So also with their workflow, the same as Northside and Marion Boyd. They're reoccurring, the growth status didn't meet, their achievement score didn't meet. So where they're sitting right now is having to reapply for restart. Last but not least, is Warren County Middle School, who's in a bit of a different situation. So their school performance score was an F, their school grade, their score was a 36. They did meet with, as far as their growth status. Are they eligible to exit restart? They absolutely are. Are we applying for reauthorization? We absolutely are. If we do not reapply for reauthorization, Warren County Middle School will lose all of the flexibility on July 1st. So that means that some of the things they've done to make these gains to met for growth status, because all of their subgroups met, then it would take us kind of back. They could not exercise those rights to use those flexibilities. If you see Warren County Middle School, their workflow looks a little bit different. It starts out pretty much the same, except with their growth status, they met or exceed. As far as their achievement score, it did decline. However, if you go to the next, you see their subgroups did grow. And in that column, as far as the workflow, workflow, the SBE is looking for, State Board of Education, is looking for at least 50% of the subgroups to meet. 100% did at the middle school. So in order to keep that high flying, we want to hold on to those flexibilities that we're being able to use. You had a question?
That was my question.
Okay.
Because they were, they still were at an F, how did they, how were they eligible to exit?
So if you see in the second column and the third column, they're not just looking at whether or not they were at that F. They're looking at growth status, they're also looking at achievement score, and they're also looking at subgroups. So all of these things are combined whenever they're considering whether a school has met, not met, or what their achievement score will be. It just happens that Warren County Middle was the only one that we had that was able to meet.
And are they only looking at the 2223 school year or the five years?
Yes, the 2223. So they're monitoring us over the five years. But that last year is when the rubber meets the road and they say, okay, what have you done? Where are you?
Okay.
Yes. So, this is where we are. You have those restart applications for board approval. If it pleases you to approve the applications that will go to the state board, Mr. Sutton will go in and let the... All he has to do is put in a date that says January 27th. You looked over the applications. You are in agreeance with the commitments that we'll make for five years to restart for those flexibilities. And we should have a decision by the end of the March. So the district and regional support takes it to the State Board of Education. They review it, and then they make a determination about whether or not we have been granted the authorization or not. Again, that should happen by the end of the March. At the bottom there, those three bullets are just what are they asking us to show and do? And basically, they just want to know that we're giving our students here in Warren County Schools the opportunity for a sound, basic education, that we're working hard to make that happen. Whether that's in a consolidated school or the schools we have now, they just want to know what's happening on the inside. A detailed description of how the school utilized the flexibilities, that has to be submitted, and that's how we will monitor it, through their school improvement plans. And then a proposed budget outlining the revenues and expenditures necessary to implement the plan. And that proposed budget is just a copy of the budget that they had this year because we don't know what we're getting coming up. So we can only go off what we've had before. Any questions here?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ma'am.
Okay. So, I'm looking at the documentation, and I think I probably understand it. And I heard, I think I heard you saying that Dr. Collins was working on some things behind the scenes. So is, my question is, is there some type of systems or projections as to if we decide to approve this application? Can we project when we will get out of restart, or, you know?
So whenever we do the applications, it's for five years. We're signing up, our commitment is five years. So during that, during that time, there's no exit. We're, you know, they're letting us operate and they're monitoring over those five years. In that fifth year, really, it almost appears to be like the sixth year. They're looking at data on that date at that time, what we submit, to determine whether we can exit or do we continue authorization.
So even if we, for example, most likely the middle school met growth.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So even if we, you know, perform better, even if we, our growth goes up, we can not come out of restart after the fifth year?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So if we're doing well, they will lessen the accounting, accountability pieces, the data that we have to submit, the annual reports, things like that. They'll just come down off of what we're required to submit, but we'll still be considered a restart school, operating under those restart flexibilities. So it's the five years or nothing.
Okay. Five years or nothing, okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Let me, if I can add to that, just sort of clarify. Given the scenario that you just described, Board Member Tally Bream, if the school met growth, if they raised that composite score, if they met proficiency, they would lose the state status or designation as a low-performing school, but they would still be considered a restart start school. And that label, if you will, again, just provides us with those continued flexibilities to continue improving the school. So it does help if we see improvement at the school in that building because it would lose the designation as a low-performing school. But it would still be considered a restart school, which only means that it has those flexibilities.
Like, I think I would be trying to back then, because if we improve the performance and growth and et cetera, then we could, you know, still have the flexibility, but we would be looked upon as if we're a school that is progressing.
Correct, that's absolutely right. Which is, which contributes to our recommendation to apply for continuation of the middle school, even though it is eligible to come out. Because we still want to continue that sustained growth and use those flexibilities to continue in that project, progression, as opposed to pulling the rubber out, so to speak, under, without taking those flexibilities before we've really been able to see some significant gains and seeing that over a sustained period of time.
I understand. And I have the, I switched to the, back to the Warren County Middle School slide. If you see, their performance grade is still an F. Their score is still 36. So we still have some work to do there. And again, that reoccurring low performing is when the state looks at your two out of three years. So it would take us two years to be considered not reoccurring low performing anyway. So we're just fighting our way out of those designations, basically.
But at least we're meeting growth.
We're pushing it to. Thank you so much for your question.
Any other question?
Yes.
If this model is, it's been five years slash seven, right?
Yes.
So, I'm trying to formulate my thoughts. So given the time has passed, what are the successes that the state has found from this reform model? What, why, you know?
You mean overall?
Restoring restart.
Overall?
Uh huh.
So basically, what, in their data, and I wish I had known that was the question because I would have brought you their presentation. But basically, we, their cohorts are lessening as far as the numbers of schools who are considered restart schools. So they're looking at what flexibilities are they using, these schools around the state, and how many are in each cohort? And so that number is declining, but the research is really kind of split as far as restart goes. Like, is it really working, you know, sustainable throughout? Which, you have a five-year cycle. So what can we say about sustainability? That the things we put in place have to be ones that we can run with even after restart? So, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a question.
Before you ask, I would support what Ms. McNeil said. The, from the state's viewpoint, I think it's a mixed bag. They've seen some improvement across districts, others not so much. And I think the point of that is, again, with this restart status, you're only getting flexibility. So you get the flexibility in hiring, some flexibility in budget and fiscal, you get some flexibility in calendar. But there's no prescribed action or formula that they... There's no playbook that they give you along with that, other than saying, here are some flexibilities, figure it out. And so for each district, it's different. For large districts, how they use those flexibilities is different from how you might use those in a small district, where you have more experienced teachers, for example, might be different how you use that versus one that has fewer experienced teachers. So districts have worked across the state. Again, from Warren County like us to Wake County, a larger district, Charlotte McLauren, everybody has these, and it's been a struggle to figure out how to make these flexibilities work for you. And it has taken districts as much as three, four, five years to begin to figure out how to make these work for you and then start to see some improvement. And I would argue the same for us here. For example, we used the counter-flexibility, really in earnest this past year when we started the high school early, three weeks early, so that we could move exams and everything on this side of the Christmas break as opposed to before. So that's really the first time we've used that counter-flexibility in a really significant sort of way. And we're again, we're looking at how we can use other, the other flex was granted to us to do that. Because in that five-year period, especially with the pandemic interrupting that, it's been difficult and challenging, I think, for the district to really figure out how to make that work for us.
And I just will piggyback and say that restart looks very different in every other district. I've been trying to reach out to contacts just to see if I can just set my foundation. It looks so different in every district. But this time with the application, one of the things that they stressed, what are we going to do different than what we said we were going to do in the first five years? So it took a lot of research for me to dig through things to see what did we do? Because the application was very different, and the application at that time didn't detail, what are you going to do? So I'm trying to find it. But they were very clear, Ms. McNeil, you need to say what are the systems and things that have been put in place at this point so that in this next five years, you see significant gains in Warren County Schools? And I think we have been working very diligently on that. And so there were so many things that we were already doing that just needed to be put in that application in ways that we were going to monitor that. Because that's where it comes, that's where the rubber really meets the road. We can say we're doing all these things, but are we monitoring them? And making sure that if they're not working, we switch gears.
What happens if within the five years, we do consolidate? And you have those two schools that are going into restart, that are restart schools, but they know the school that is not? So what happens with the monitoring piece? I mean, what?
Yes, so that would be a question that would definitely have to go to district and school support just to see, how do we operate now with all of our schools being in one place and one of those being a school that's not a restart school? So the state will give us guidance on that. Right now, it's almost like a new situ, it'll be a new situation for them because during this restart cycle, they haven't had schools to consolidate just yet. So we'll see what they tell us to do. But I imagine that we'll just go through with our reporting like we've been because that school will have to have a school improvement plan, maybe more than one. So it just, they're still going to monitor using those tools. We just don't know what's going to be required of us just yet. We have to put that, I guess, give them that situation and say, this is what's happening here. And our consolidation includes our restart schools. So what does that look like for us? They're going to have to give us big guidance on that.
I think we should ask that question before they do judge it. Because, you know, if we decide to do, you know, run that direction, then we should all have our answers.
True, that, I mean, Mr. Sutton, you can speak on that if you...
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly we would be allowed to keep those flexibilities. We would not...
Lose that.
We would not lose that.
Okay. I don't feel they will take them away from us. It just becomes, how do we... It just becomes, how do we report? Because now we're, work encompassing some teachers who aren't, that idea of restart teachers, meaning that we may not have hired them under those flexibilities. So are they now still a part of what we report? So it would be those things, they wouldn't just snatch them and say, oh, y'all can't have the flexibilities anymore.
My, my question, or I guess not, not necessarily a question, but would like for you to elaborate is, I know for those of us who've been in education for a while, when, when restart started with the state, it was, um, kind of looked upon really bad and you didn't want to be a restart.
Yes.
And that was, that was just not, not good. Can you talk about, because there are so many in the state now, can you kind of talk about the perception of restart now?
Yeah, I, so that perception is a funny thing because restart came out of, it was birthed from superintendents not wanting their schools designated as low performing. So that was the whole idea of, okay, well, just give us, give us a way to work with our schools that doesn't, you know? So it really was not intended to be, have negative connotations at all. It really was meant to slide past the negative connotation. So it's interesting that it's that way, but I think basically now, especially with the data, because schools are doing such a good job taking advantage of these flexibilities, it's not, uh, there's no stigma attached to it anymore. It becomes a, a means to an end. Like, we have this, these flexibilities, let's use them to get where we need to be. So that stigma is not like it used to be.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it is, it has lessened a lot, and I think because schools are seeing that success.
Okay, great.
Ms. Sutton, did you have another question?
Any further questions? Discussion? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The member chair?
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that we, I mean, like, we approve the restart application as presented.
The member chair, I approve the motion that we approve the application that was presented.
Okay. I have a motion by Board Member Tally Brain and a second by Board Member Byrd, that we approve the restart application as presented. May we vote as well as with the voting sound of aye? Aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries. There we go, restart, five more years. Oh, I do have a question out. Is there any possibility that the application would be denied?
Okay, so good question.
Sorry, I just now thought about it because I can't say five more years, right?
So we're, we're in a good place as far as applying. We are, we are in a very good place. The only questionable application is Northside, and the only reason why is because last year, um, their school improvement plan didn't really show or demonstrate their use of flexibilities. So I'm thinking that the state board may require something a little bit more from Northside, but the other schools were in good shape. So I don't, I don't expect us to be, um, denied simply because the push now is that these schools have what they need to get these student, student outcomes up. So, yeah, I feel, I definitely feel good about it. I don't, I mean, I'm not losing any sleep about those applications.
Great, thank you. Sorry for the delayed question. All right. Our next action item is the recommendation to close Marion Boyd Elementary, Northside Elementary, and Vaughn Elementary Schools. Who is presenting?
Yeah.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes. Thank you. So pursuant to your policy, Board Policy Ninety Four Ten, closing or conversion of school facilities, uh, the closure of the following elementary schools, Marion Boyd Elementary and Northside Elementary and Vaughn Elementary, uh, is being considered and re- and recommended relative to, uh, the policy. The primary factor in determining whether it's appropriate to close these school facilities is a result of an evaluative study that includes the life expectancy of the affected buildings and an accounting of any repairs needed to continue the use of those buildings, financial cost of operating, uh, those facilities, and then the potential for unsafe by closing. Wherever our students is, uh, to be affected is a factor, geographic conditions and others that you see, uh, as listed here, uh, on the screen. The primary ones that are, uh, part of the recommendation are the first two. These were addressed in the Axios, uh, report that took a, a look, a close look at the now, into the analysis, uh, of these three buildings. As you know, all three buildings were built in the nineteen fifties, uh, and so you're looking at buildings that are more than sixty years, uh, old. They have a number of systems that are obsolete, uh, that make it difficult and costly, uh, to both repair, uh, and maintain. You also saw in the study that we shared at the last board meeting, uh, where we took a look at many of the, uh, other factors that were considered in terms of geographic conditions, uh, where are our other students, uh, looked at the cost of providing additional school facilities. Uh, of course, that's been addressed with the, uh, grant that was received to build a new, uh, consolidated elementary school. And so you also heard that we have, uh, had three meetings back in January where we shared, uh, the condition and all this information and condition of these facilities, uh, with our community. That was an opportunity for community to provide input, to ask questions, uh, regarding, um, the condition of these buildings, uh, and even, uh, expected or anticipated uses, uh, going forward in the future. And so, uh, with all of that being considered, it is, um, the recommendation, uh, to, uh, close Marion Boyd, Northside, and Vaughn Elementary Schools, uh, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or when one or more new school facilities are available to serve those students, whichever occurs, uh, first. And so that is the recommendation. We'll take any, any questions you may have.
The member chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, so much that it's sudden, and, uh, to the board. After listening to, um, I guess I would say the public forum that we had, we had that one speaker, so, um, proposed a question about, um, would not necessarily consolidate, not necessarily consolidate, maybe delay the consolidation. If we must, to look at, consider that, I would look as far as our funding. When we run funding, um, when we're able to maintain the funding that we have, if we were to consider that recommendation, I believe that, much as I mean not consolidate, but maybe delay the consolidation is the question, if that makes sense?
I think it makes sen-, it makes sense, yes. What I would say, one is this vote and what we're asking for approval of tonight is simply on the closure of these three schools. Eternal Keith can chime in, but I think at some point it, it, it may require a second vote to consolidate. But this motion is simply to close these three schools based on the physical condition and assessment, uh, of these buildings and close them in two years at the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six, or June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So even in that motion, being that we're two years out, that would, I think, give you some additional time to still, uh, consider or study, uh, consolidation, but it does put, put this action in motion, uh, so that when you look at the grant that was received and moving forward with that, that allows us to continue moving in terms of planning and design of a new, uh, facility. Because again, you're talking about a year of design and then a year of construction. And I, I would think that we would want to get some of that work, uh, underway, um, while we might still study, study that piece.
The member chair?
Do you have the comments about my question on two seconds? So, I mean, I think your question was essentially, um, if the board decides to create some sort of report as suggesting about that commenter who was there for the public hearing portion and the meeting, would that, to, that process and maybe effectively round the board with funding? Construct, new construction, whether that's a new construction of one school, um, or new construction of two schools, right? I, I don't know the answer to that factual question.
Okay.
To your superintendent's point, you've got a nice long runway here, um, but runway is always seen long when you're doing things in advance. And if a construction will, they never feel that long in practice, right? So, um, so I think your superintendent would be best positioned to say, to what extent next steps of planning, design, et cetera, um, are in the works and hinge on this board taking action on the closure by the end of this month, by the end of May, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Now, with respect to the funding, we could not, we could not consolidate two schools, um, based on the thing that we've received and the application and that was granted. We have to consolidate all three. So that, that would, an decision to consolidate only two would essentially invalidate the grant as we have received.
So explain that concept so that maybe we could understand it a little bit at another level. You say, you know, we could just do the two, we would have, we, we are, we would have to do all three elementary schools.
So again, the, the grant application was written and based on the, the idea of consolidating all three schools.
Mm-hmm.
So to, to only consolidate two would then be in conflict with what we have agreed upon with the state when we agreed to receive that money. And I think in one of the meetings, talked about the fact that applying for consolidation of all three schools essentially improved our chances of receiving that grant. One of the, the primary factors in considering, in consideration of the grant was the number of students affected, the what percentage of our ADM would be affected. And also consolidation, uh, is also, uh, one of the factors that, that would have given our application, uh, more points and made it, gave it a greater opportunity to be successful, which it, which it was.
Understood. Thank you for sharing.
Well, my concern is, um, I guess is my pet peeve is student achievement. And I definitely believe that the level, um, that we will level the playing field for all students in the county with consolidation. Because we're, we're look, uh, previously, it was mentioned that's the class size at one school might be twenty-seven, and another school it might be twelve. And, you know, that's not really leveling the, the playing field for all students. I think all students deserve the best.
Do you want me to comment on that? I, I didn't really ask a question.
She was just making a comment.
That's a comment. I believe that's a comment.
I, I would say, I, I mean, I would agree with that, and I, and I do think that, and research shows that improving facilities helps to improve student achievement. When students are in a strong learning environment, just as if, as employees, when you work in a warm, comfortable learning environment, you learn better, you function better, you perform at a higher level. So I think all of those things are true, and a, a new building would help with that. But I want to also say too, and I understand the point of our speaker, the building alone doesn't necessarily improve student achievement. And we all know that as well as educators, we know that too. It does matter what is happening in the building. So the building in and of itself does not improve student performance, nor is it a strategy for school improvement. The, the, it, it is a strategy for improved facility utilization. And that, and so I don't want that point to be missed, that this is not a strategy where we're saying, hey, we're going to improve student performance, academic performance because we're building a new school. We're building a new school because we have three aging buildings that were built in nineteen fifties, we have aging infrastructure that we cannot continue to support with the dollars and cents that we have. And so this is a strategy around facility utilization and improving facilities, not necessarily a strategy for school improvement.
To that point, um, because our county commissioners are responsible for the capital needs of our district, correct me if I'm wrong, they're in support of your recommendation?
They are. And I, I would say they, they have indicated that support and support of the initial grant to consolidate the three schools when we received the thirty million dollar grant. They've also indicated their support to apply for another additional twelve million dollars of supplemental funding to supplement the initial thirty million dollar request. So I, I would say that it's safe to say they support this effort and this recommendation based on the, the support and vote, um, for both grant applications.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments? Discussion? If not, before I ask for, um, a motion, I'd like to just say, and I just scripted a small thing, um, there can be no vote more difficult for a school board member to make than whether to close a school or not. Add to that, a vote to close three schools. As board members, I believe we've listened openly and honestly to the public, administrative, and pers- professional input necessary to arrive at the kind of informed decision such a vote deserves. As a board member, we must be fiscally responsible stewards of taxpayer money, honor and respect the educational institutions of our community, and provide our young people with a quality education while attending the kind of state of the art and safe school buildings they deserve. It is my hope the vote of the board will accomplish all of the aforementioned. Does any other board member have something they would like to say before we take a vote?
I don't.
Okay, hearing none then, I entertain a motion, um, that we, to accept the recommendation to close Marion Boyd Elementary, Northside Elementary, and Vaughn Elementary Schools as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the closure.
May I interject?
Please.
I just, um, I apologize, Madam Chair, and Madam Vice Chair. I don't think the right direction include that date that, um, those three schools be closed, um, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or as soon as one or more facilities is available to serve those students, whichever occurs later.
I got that. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the closure of Marion Boyd, Northside, and Vaughn Elementary Schools effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or when one or more new facilities are available to serve those students or whichever occurs later.
Second? I'm sorry, what is? Okay, it, I'm reading up here. Okay, sorry. Okay, it has been recommended with a motion by Board Member Sims and seconded by Board Member Byrd, that the board approves the closure of Marion Boyd Elementary, Northside Elementary, and Vaughn Elementary Schools effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or when one or more new school facilities are available to serve those students, whichever occurs later. May we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No? That motion carries. All right. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to convene into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we convene in the closed session?
For?
For, oh. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute fourteen dash three eighteen dot eleven A, one, A five, and A six, to prevent and disclosure disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 115C dash 321, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to 143 dash 318 dot 11A3. Second.
So I have a motion by Co-Chairman Sims and a second by Board Member Tally Brane, that we convene into closed session for said recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
May we vote as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. That motion carries. 7:08, so we will adjourn until, let's see, 7:15.
We are back in the open session and at this point I'd like to entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting?
A motion has been made by Board Member Sims and seconded by Board Member Long that we adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, vote as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Meeting adjourned.